Hey, Justin.
Hi, Adam.
We are live on YouTube now, too, so just keep that in mind. Hey, John. Hey, Josh.
Hey, Adam.
Hey, Joy. All right.
Adam, I made it.
You still you still beat the majority of council. Yeah, we'll get started in two minutes. Just to remind you, we are broadcasting live right now on our YouTube channel and our access channel.
Hello, Adam.
Hi, Jean.
Adam, just a tidbit of useless information while we're waiting to get started since there's no elevator music to listen to. Did y'all see where price of oil went negative for the first time ever today?
No, I didn't see that. I kind of wish I had my old Jeep back.
Does this mean if we buy gas, they pay us?
That's essentially what that means. It went negative by thirty seven percent. So but it was only for the May contract. So when you look at the June, July, August, September, they're all still around twenty dollars a barrel, but it was interesting nonetheless.
I think we're missing the mayor and Larry White. So if you give us just a few minutes here.
The mayor's coming on. She had trouble with her computer.
The mayor's muted, but she's I see her on there.
Mayor's working on her audio.
That was the first time I heard you through the computer, Jean.
Can you hear me?
I do hear you, Alex. Hi.
How are you all? Mayor, your camera is covered up there, but we can't hear you.
My camera is covered? So.
You might have switched to the rear facing instead of the front facing.
Is that better?
No, but we can hear you just fine.
Well, I follow instructions fairly well. I just don't know what to do.
We saw you at the outset. Jeff, do you have any ideas?
Yes, ma'am. What you want to do is touch your screen and the little bar will show up at the top of your screen and you'll see the a video link with a little arrow.
Well, no, actually, what I see is a choice between live or on YouTube.
Oh, to the left of that, you'll see where it says start or stop video. Do you see that?
I do. I see stop video.
Okay, then there should be a little arrow right next to it that you want to touch.
That says share content, maybe?
The little little arrow should be pointed up.
Oh, yeah, that's the only one that's pointed up.
You should have a place to select the camera.
Okay, let me go back. Try to go back to that. So what I see are options to switch the camera, to mute or unmute, to shut stop video, to share contact, participants, and more. Can I just press more?
Mayor, your camera's working. There's something in front of it.
There's nothing in front of it.
It's got to be switched to the front camera. It's on the rear camera.
I'm sorry?
Where you see where it says stop video?
Yes.
If you tap on that, is there a little arrow?
When I did that, I just lost all audio.
Mayor, are you using your iPad or using your laptop?
I'm using my iPad.
Is there something that's over the flap where your camera is?
No. Okay, I'll tell you what. I can push it all the way around. So now it's definitely exposed. It was not before, but what I'm seeing is totally upside down.
The table or something.
The table's upside down. I'm sorry. Yes. No, the Adam was right. My camera was covered and what I did was completely turn my screen like a one eighty. And what has resulted is me seeing everything now upside down. Maybe I'll do it the long way, which should cover both faces. Close the camera. You know, my screen just isn't turning. I don't know what to do. Do you still not see me? I just don't know what's different from from last time. I have no idea. And typically, I'm able to turn this thing. So my camera is there.
Well, that's gracing. Can you do the whole thing?
If I did, and that's what I just did. Okay. Okay. Okay, well, how I don't know. I don't know what to say. How much do I need to be seen? I can't hear anybody, but.
Mayor, we are. We are live on the access channel on YouTube, so we probably just can proceed. And as long as you can see everybody else, that's probably the important thing.
Okay, and I see you now, and I will assume that as we move forward that I'll be able to see everybody else. So are we in fact having the workshop first?
It's all one meeting. We've combined the two.
I see. I see. Okay, that being the case, I officially call this meeting of the Conway City Council to to order. Madam Clerk, can you hear my voice?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Do have we met the requirements of the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, we have.
Thank you, ma'am. And would you please help us establish that there is in fact a quorum with a roll call?
Ma'am, Mayor, you are here. Mayor Pro Tem Shane Hubbard.
Make sure you press your spacebar to unmute when you speak.
Here.
William Goldfinch.
I'm here.
Alex Hyman.
Here.
Justin Jordan. Justin.
Justin, unmute.
I'm here. My spacebar wasn't unmute me.
Ms. Timms.
I'm here.
Larry White.
I do not see Larry.
I do not hear Larry, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. If you would join me in prayer, please. Dear Father, thank you for your countless blessings, even in the midst of an active pandemic. Thank you for the privilege of having our lives play out in the United States of America and in Conway, South Carolina. As we lead, help us to be led by your will and by your way. It is in your name we pray. Amen. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would join me, we will say it in unison. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, my not so perfect connection also disallows me from seeing the agenda as we move forward. I have it in another place. Oh, no, 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 it's showing now. I'm so sorry. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. But before we actually do the approval, I would move that we defer consideration of item eight, which is first reading of ordinance Z A two zero two zero five four A in order to allow staff to make appropriate adjustments. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Timms. And what I meant to say is that nobody will be unduly hindered by this delay. We've already spoken about that. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor. If you would indicate your vote, yes, please.
Mayor, I have a solid vote from William Goldfinch, from Alex Hyman, from Shane Hubbard, from Justin Jordan. Ms. Timms, if you want to just indicate with your thumbs up, I think that would be fun.
And I also vote on the affirmative, Adam.
Thank you.
So for all members present, there is a unanimous vote, a positive vote, and that motion does carry. Moving forward relative to the consent agenda, is there a motion to accept it? In that case, I will.
Affirmative votes from Mr. Hubbard, Mr. Hyman, Mr. Goldfinch, Ms. Timms, and Mr. Jordan, and I'm assuming yourself, but I won't make that assumption for you.
Well, you can make that assumption, but I don't know that there was a motion.
Oh, that let's say I think it was Mr. Goldfinch and Mr. Hyman were the first two.
Thank you so much. I'm just not aware, given my situation that I can't even describe.
Back up. Mr. Goldfinch made the motion seconded by Mr. Mr. Hyman to approve the consent of the agenda as amended.
Thank you so much. And I believe based on the votes that you mentioned, again, we have a the motion carries unanimously through the members who are present. All right, so.
I think we're now on, I think.
We're now on item five. It just it just changed for me. Thank you so much. We are going to now be presented information by the Robinson Design Engineers on their stormwater infrastructure project to address flash flooding near Trinity Church. Welcome.
And there we have Joshua Robinson, Nolan Williams, and Joy Brown. Joyce with the Nature Conservancy and Josh and Nolan are with Robinson Design Engineers. They're going to present on the stormwater project by Trinity. I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having us.
Hey, Adam, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. And so if y'all, if you just give me one minute, I'll just do a quick intro. I want to leave most of the time to Joshua and Nolan to present on the project. But first, yes, thank you so much to the council and to the mayor for the time tonight to present this project. As Alan Adam said, my name is Joy Brown. I'm the Marine Program Manager with the Nature Conservancy here in South Carolina. Been working here for about twelve years, but TNC has been involved in state efforts for over fifty. So really excited to be a part of this project. In the time that I've been working here, we have over a partner, a great partnership with Boeing over ten years or more based on their interest in the South Carolina coast. And we've been fortunate to receive grant funds from them to be used in support of our North Coast resilience work. And our efforts on the North Coast have been underway with Ori and Georgetown County and the communities within those counties since two thousand and sixteen with the goal to utilize nature to mitigate for flood impacts. So the project design Robinson Design Engineers is presenting today is a result of the Boeing Grant, the the funding from them, the North Coast Work Plan, and most recently, a great partnership between the City of Conway, Robinson Design Engineers, and the Nature Conservancy. So it's been a delight and a pleasure to work with the staff in Conway. And I know we're all excited about this project and look forward to seeing the final designs. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joshua Robinson and his team with Nolan Williams. And I just want to say thank you and happy to take any questions at any point anyone has about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Let's see here. Zoom is telling me that I can't start a screen share while the other participant is sharing. Could someone help me determine who else's screens sharing?
Taylor, are you able to unshare?
I've stopped sharing. He should be able to share screen at the bottom now.
Okay. Okay, bear with me one moment. Trying to figure this out. I've never screen shared with so many people on at once, so this is a this is a challenge.
We see your screen now, Joshua.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Let's see. Can you see? Can you all see yourselves and the PDF or just the PDF?
I see only the PDF.
Okay, so.
Joshua, can you make it full screen?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. How's this? Great. Okay.
That's better.
Well, we're glad to be here with you all and despite the awkwardness of this format, we're all going through this together and we're glad to be here. You all know why we're here. You all in the city of Conway, like many folks in coastal South Carolina, but especially you all have suffered some catastrophic floods in the last several years, three major ones. And we have been, as engineers and hydrologists, sort of learning a lot about these flooding events. We've heard stories from the community and we've been learning a lot about how you've responded to them. And these are something you've lived through and you've seen on the ground in your homes. And we, Nolan and I, and our team here in Charleston, have had some similar experiences and worked with a lot of communities and organizations, institutions, cities nearby. And this is a very important part of our story here in coastal South Carolina. Not only have you experienced, though, the the major flood events, but also there's a significant amount of stormwater flash flooding that you've experienced sort of on a on a regular basis, nuisance flooding. And there's been a variety of of ways that individual homeowners have have started to work to to solve some of their flooding problems. And this has been a huge stressor in the community for for many years, as we've as we've learned. But as we've started to get to know Conway a little bit better in the last six or so months, we've also seen a completely different perspective, and we've begun to see that what's so unique about the lifestyle in the city of Conway. And so what we're going to talk about today is not just about how to solve these these specific problems that you've suffered, but how do we combine these problems with some of the unique characteristics of Conway to create new opportunity in in the way that the residents of Conway live their lives? So one of the main things that that sticks out is this wonderful river walk that you all enjoy. We've enjoyed it in our visits to Conway, the Waukamaw River. It's one. It's a very unique place that I'm sure that you all don't take for granted to be so close to the city, to be able to walk from the urban core down to the riverwalk and enjoy these amazing views. As we've shared with city staff, you know, even if you just Google images for the city of Conway or Conway Real Estate, you see these images of these beautiful sunsets over the marsh, the swamp, the bridges, and this relationship that you all have with historic bridge, with the railway, but also with this, the urban sort of core. You know, we work with a number of of communities across the state at South Carolina and North Carolina, and many cities are trying to capture what you all have maintained so well, and that is this nice cityscape where you've got storefronts and a walkable community and shops and things that have been around for a long time, directly next to nature, directly next to the Waukamaw, Kingston Lake, and Crabtree Swamp. And this is a really unique aspect of Conway that we've come to to enjoy. And in addition, the the thing that sticks out, you know, Nolan and I spend a lot of time on the water, both professionally, but also, you know, recreational time, as I'm sure a lot of you do. And to be able to have these sort of vistas from downtown, it 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 helps to tell the story of Conway's relationship to water. It's not just about a problem. You know, a lot of a lot of communities that we work in see water as specifically a nuisance, and they struggle to see water as this great opportunity. But Conway, on the other hand, is completely surrounded by water in a way that's recreational and beautiful, and it creates this sort of natural setting. And so we've just captured these images that we think kind of inspire our work and inspire the concept designs that we're going to share with you over the next few minutes. So as Joy mentioned, this is a this is a program that's all about nature-based solutions to reduce flood impacts. So as a bit of an introduction, I want to just point out what nature-based solutions really are. It's this idea that instead of just buying out properties or instead of just creating an engineering solution to solve a drainage problem, it's instead this idea that we can actually turn these flood mitigation solutions into community assets that will that will reduce flood risk, but will also enhance other community values, such as the ecological benefits that we've just pointed out and that is so sort of natural to the to the community of Conway. So that's what nature-based solutions really all about. It's about these co-benefits. We don't just want to build a big pond or a stormwater basin and build a fence around it and spend a lot of money to do it. We want to act also capture these other community benefits like recreation and aesthetics and ecological enhancement. So going back several months, we started our work in earnest at the beginning of the year. Here's sort of our work plan to to orient you to where we are currently. We had a project startup kickoff meeting there with the core group of folks of the city. We began a intense data collection program, both of data on the ground and also data from the community. We had a community gathering, community workshop, information gathering session. We spoke to dozens of community residents and heard their stories and understood how the flooding had impacted them, but also where the flooding was located. We followed that with some in-depth engineering hydrology analyses and then led to concept design. And here I want to make a couple of important points. Our data collection effort was very straightforward compared to a lot of other communities we work. And there's a great credit due to the city and the city staff for the GIS mapping that you all have funded through the years, the storm sewer mapping, the utilities mapping. I can't think of another community we've worked in that has such good, high-quality data readily at our disposal. And so what that what that means is that it's we're sort of standing on your shoulders and doing our analyses, and these things that you funded through the years have helped our work to go that much further and has helped to stretch the grant funds that much further. So kudos to all of you for for actually having this high-quality data set that it's not just something that's sitting on a shelf, but these GIS maps, these storm sewer maps have really gone a long way to help you put you at the top of the line for some of these important grant funds for things like flood mitigation reduction. We've also had a overwhelming response from the community in terms of our community gathering meeting. I think we had more than twice the number of residents we expected to come and share their stories with us. And and the other point I want to make about the concept design is that we, this project has benefited from an intern with the Nature Conservancy, Lucy Rummler, who's a Masters of Landscape Architecture student at Penn State University. She's a native of South Carolina, but happens to be pursuing graduate studies in Pennsylvania, and she contributed a lot of the wonderful designs and graphics that you'll see in the slides to follow. So this has been a group effort, but it's not just been something that Robinson Design Engineers has done. This is something where we've put together a lot of information from a lot of folks, and it's really been a joy to work on. So coming away from today, we're going to move into final design and documentation and start to pursue the grant grant proposal. We've already submitted one grant proposal, which I'll mention later. But we're kind of in this this final twenty percent of the project. Okay, so I'm going to run through quickly with what we did with data collection. There's actually a photo of Crabtree Swamp here that Nolan collected during some of our early fieldwork. We collected community data, hydrology. We collected community data, hydrologic data and base mapping data. This is an example of some of the base map information. And this most of the data here you see came from the Conway GIS. So this is what we started with. Oftentimes, we have to start from scratch with compiling all this information. You had it readily available. It made our job very easy. You can see the parcel information. You can see the Crabtree Canal there. You can see the location of structures. You can see the location of properties that the city has purchased, some of the floodplain buyouts, and then some of the other parcels that are sort of holdouts there. This is a photo from a media photo from the community workshop where we looked at this same base map and we were able to discuss some different experiences that residents have had, hear stories and hear ideas from folks that have been observing the canal and observing the different waterways for many, many years. And we were able to compile the topographic data into this series of simple base maps to help us understand how the flooding has been happening. So this is a a topographic base map using LiDAR data and the parcel data from the city. And it shows what happens when the water goes from one foot elevation and gradually steps its way up in increments of a few feet at a time. So it helps us understand where water collects and where the flooding has persisted in this part of town. So you can see as the water level increases, what properties are going to be flooded first and have been flooded first. You can see at this level of eight feet Sherwood Drive is almost completely underwater. You can see water starting to sort of move around the Methodist Church area. And you can see as water gets up to 10 feet and 12 feet, you start to see conditions that you've all actually experienced in the last few years. I want to draw your attention to this island in the middle there. That is the church property. So you can see in real time, that's the aerial photo of the church during the largest flood, kind of back and forth there. That's the high ground. And I want to talk a little bit about why, you know, as we've done our hydrology study, why did why has this happened? You know, what what is the source of the floodwater that has created such an extensive flooding situation? So I want to point to this map. And if you look in the bottom left of the screen, you see Conway and you see a red polygon. And that red polygon is our project area. That's all the land area that drains into the Crabtree Swamp by way of our project area, the air, the the buyout area that the city of Conway has purchased. That's our that's our drainage basin. Okay, so now here's that same drainage area. And then this gold color is the Crabtree Canal drainage area. Okay, now this next image shows the additional land area or the watershed of Kingston Lake. And you notice that these two bodies of water come together just within a mile of our project area. But then if you overlay that with the with Lake Waukamaw or the Waukamaw River, you see it comes down from the upper part of North Carolina and these these three major basins all converge right in our project area. And it starts to put in to it starts to kind of put into context why this flooding has been so extreme in the last few years. And one of the things I want to point out, and this is this is one of the main results of our workshop with city staff is that, and I want to make it clear here, that the flooding that's happened in Conway is certainly not the fault of the city of Conway. This is something that crosses a state boundary into North Carolina. The flooding that's happened in the city of Conway is a result of things that have happened up in North Carolina and far outside of Conway. Now, some cities we work with, they have flooding problems that are the result of decisions that have been made in the city. But in the case of Conway, these the flooding problems have been are not not the the result of decisions that you all have made now or in the past. In fact, the 1982 Army Corps study said that the major cause of flooding problems are the result of changes in use in the land use resources within the basin. So that was the that was the study nearly 40 years ago that identified the the source of flooding was the land use changes. And I've overlaid this on an image of 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 land clearing and deforestation because a lot of the land area, as you know, in the basin is used for silviculture and used for timber harvesting. So every time that we go through cycles of timber harvest, it changes the land use, which increases the amount of runoff. So the watershed, and to a large part, used to look like this. And through cycles, it does look like this. We have a lot of bottomland hardwood forests and ponded areas that hold lots of water. But over time, as these things have been changed by urbanization and deforestation, it simply delivers more water into Conway. And here's a simple, you know, diagram that shows how that works. You know, in a natural landscape, you only have about 10% of the rainfall is converted into runoff. But in a developed landscape, much more of that rainfall gets converted into runoff. And in Coastal South Carolina, a lot of our local studies have shown that in many cases, the runoff conversion is much higher than this 30% like you see in kind of the typical textbook case. In fact, in Coastal South Carolina, most of our rainfall, probably about 70% of our rainfall gets converted into water vapor through evapotranspiration. It's why it's so humid in Coastal South Carolina. So in in essence, you've got a large area of land that's been manipulated over time. And so it's created a whole lot more runoff that finds its way to your front door. So we did a little bit of historical research to understand how long this has been going on and to provide some context for our designs. If you look at this old Antebell description of Conway, you see this quote that it's low-lying swampy lands made the area unsuitable to large plantations, limiting agricultural achievement. So Conway was actually located as a city, as you all know, on this river bluff, this very high area, but the area surrounding it were the low-lying areas that are prone to flooding. If you look at this historic map, you can see the the original city grid there of Conway, right there at the confluence. And you see over time, this is our project area denoted by the 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 blue dot there. You can see Crabtree Swamp. This is 1943, this map. As you get to 1980, you can see the Crabtree Swamp has been channelized at that point. And Conway has started to grow north more towards the Crabtree Swamp, still on high ground. But all these different land use changes have created a a different sort of natural plumbing through the landscape. Now, in our community meeting, we heard a lot from residents about the Army Corps of Engineers Drainage Project and how there was this expectation that the Army Corps of Engineers Drainage Project and flood flood control project should have solved this big flooding problem. Or we heard questions like, why hasn't the Army Corps of Engineers taken care of this? I remember, you know, a long time ago when they did this study, we were supposed to solve this problem. Well, we were surprised to find out by studying the original Army Corps of Engineers project report that the Army Corps of Engineers Drainage Study and Flood Control Effort was only meant to solve a three-year frequency flood event. It wasn't meant to solve the large storms like you've experienced. This was basically just to slightly reduce the amount of agricultural land that was flooded. This is a quote directly from the Army Corps of Engineers Drainage Study. "The project was designed as a flood control and major drainage project that would prevent agricultural damages caused by floods equal to the three-year frequency." That's a big point that I want to emphasize here. As as you may be hearing from constituents about Army Corps projects and flood control projects, the Army Corps never had the ability or the or the the demand to to solve these big projects, big flooding events. It's only the small events they're even attempting to control. Okay, so our hydrologic analysis, we Nolan and I had the opportunity to participate with the city of Charleston in the Dutch Dialogs process, which maybe some of you heard about on the in the news, where some architects and landscape architects from New Orleans and from the Netherlands got together with the city of Charleston staff and local engineers and scientists and landscape architects to study flooding problems in Charleston. One of the types of analyses, one of the nomenclature that we learned from that group was this idea of a water assignment. To basically understand how much water are we dealing with? And it gives us a sense of how much land area we need to hold a certain volume of water. So we decided to do a simple analysis of that kind, just as a communication tool. Here's our project area. The red line indicates the all the land that drains into the buyout zone and drains north into Crabtree Canal. And if we do a simple water assignment analysis, these blue circles, these concentric circles represent the amount of land we would need to store all the rainfall and runoff from the two-year storm, the 10-year storm and the 25-year storm. So the largest circle represents the size of a one and a half circular pond, if you will, that would store all of the runoff from the 25-year storm. And then as you move closer in, it shows the 10-year storm or the two-year storm. Just as a way to put that over to overlay that on the the land that the city's already purchased and then also sort of the the floodplain swampy area that's that's surrounding. So another part of the hydrologic analyses that we did was we looked at US Geological Survey gauge records to understand what type of storm events flow through flow through the Crabtree Swamp. Now, we heard from city staff and a lot of residents that Crabtree has two peaks. There's the first peak, which is the flashy peak that happens when all the rainfall dumps on the landscape and it stages up and you have one flood. But then a few days later, you have another flood when the Waukamaw Basin drains down through the landscape. And you see the the USGS data bears this out, both for Crabtree, but also for the Waukamaw River, where you've got the first peak, the water flows flows down into it. And then you've got the second peak as the rest of the landscape sort of catches up. So the point I want to make here is that to just remind the group that the project area that we're working on is specifically to address this first peak, this flashy rainfall and runoff that happens for water that falls in the city and then drains towards Crabtree Canal. That's specifically the the storm event that we're trying to capture. The big part of the storm that comes down from North Carolina comes through the Waukamaw. We can't mitigate that flood work with this particular buyout area. Now, what we're doing is going to help with that, but that's not the purpose of this project. That's not the aim of the project. The main aim is to handle the rainfall that occurs in the project area and to mitigate those flood impacts. So instead of having the rainfall on top of the rest of the floodwater, we're trying to separate those and manage the rainfall separately. So that's an important point, especially as you're thinking about the project, possibly discussing with constituents. We're not looking to solve the big flood from North Carolina coming down Waukamaw. We're trying to solve the nuisance flash flooding that happens on a regular basis. And in so doing, we will also diminish the larger floods while we're at it. Okay, so now we're really going to get into the deep weeds of the analyses and lead into the concept design. This cross-section of Crabtree Canal has been very helpful for us to understand how flooding has occurred. So this is a cross-section cut through the landscape. And the the water, the blue shown there, the water, that's the Crabtree Canal itself. You can see that the vertical scale is exaggerated because it is a relatively flat landscape. So we've exaggerated the the vertical scale to make it more more understandable. And so you can see the levees that are on either side of the canal. You can see the levee that's on the same side of the the southern side of the canal, closest to the church and closest to the buyout properties. You can see that that levee is the highest. And then we've superposed with that some different flood levels. You can see Irma there that stayed within the 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 lowest natural floodplain. Then you can see the October 2015, you know, rain event, the Joaquin Storm, and where that falls within the natural floodplain. And you can see there we've labeled that's the location of the the approximate location of the main block of the residential buyout properties. And then you can see Hurricane Florence, the very top, elevation almost 15, where that that flood event completely filled not only the natural floodplain, but it actually went higher than the natural floodplain. It went actually above the location of Trinity, United Methodist. And you can see here, just diagrammatically, that Trinity was built on the natural bluff. And so one of the main observations we've made here is that Trinity was built in a good place. Trinity and the the homes that are behind Trinity were built in a place that is a natural bluff, that is part of the natural landscape that was formed over a very long period of time by floodwaters. So the event that the events that we've suffered, but primarily Hurricane Florence, it's not so much the new normal as it is that it was an extreme event and there was a lot of land use change within the basin. So this really helps to 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 show sort of that fringe of the floodwaters as they move up into the landscape and just how rare of an event Hurricane Florence is. We're going to look at this same cross-section in a few different ways, but I just want you to take a moment and study this to kind of understand and try to, you know, understand how the water level moves up into this landscape. And the bottomland areas here are sort of the natural depressional bottomland forest wetlands. And as you move up on the bluffs, those are the mostly high and dry areas. As you know, the Crabtree Canal has experienced a few different restoration projects with cutting some of the the floodplain down and planting it. This this project that's been ongoing is is all about trying to increase the floodable area along the canal itself. There are several initiatives like this. The Army Corps is studying it now. This has done quite well. There's another initiative. We recently met with the Army Corps of Engineers with Adam and Joy to learn about their efforts for the Savannah Liliput, which is a muscle that's a that is threatened. And it's it's a very rare muscle. And it just so happens that one of its the few places that it's been documented is within the Crabtree Swamp. Now, this project, we weren't brought onto the project to look at restoring habitat for the Savannah Liliput. But the reason we want to bring it up here is that you can see the other areas in the southeast on this slide where the the muscle has been documented. And the Waukamaw Basin and the Crabtree Basin specifically are the only are the only coastal area where the Savannah Liliput has been identified. So what this means is that anything that we can do to enhance the the habitat in the ecosystem to support the Savannah Liliput is also going to help mitigate flooding. Now, you'll also be interested to find out if you are an angler, as we are, that the Savannah Liliput is mobilized mostly in its larval stage by panfish, such as bluegill. A lot of the game species actually move these these mussels around. So what that means is what's good for bluegill, what's good for recreational fishing in most cases also happens to be good for this muscle. So this is another detail that we've discovered that kind of all goes into this sort of these co-benefits of of leading to conceptual design. Okay, so I've talked about community data, hydrologic data, the base mapping data. Now we're going to get into the what we think is the more fun stuff, which is the concept designs and sharing with you some of the inspiration images and kind of what what has led us to the concept design that we're going to share with you now. We found this quote from one of our favorite authors, Wendell Berry, that's helped sort of inspire how we should go about design. And this quote is as follows. "We cannot know what we are doing until we know what nature would be doing if we were doing nothing." And this is really sort of the cornerstone of these nature-based solutions. Because for us as engineers and hydraulics engineers, we know that the Army Corps of Engineers and a lot of engineers before us have thrown all they can at these drainage problems, and yet the flooding problems persist. But we also see that the natural areas are inherently more resilient. And so this quote has helped sort of guide us to see what would the natural landscape be doing if we did nothing? In other words, if we were to just abandon everything and let the buyout zone do its own thing for the next 10 or 50 years, what would it try to do? Well, we know for some from some other areas that it would be trying to recreate more of these sort of bottomland hardwood forests with these plants that love water and these plants that take up water and evaporate up into the air. The land may be trying to create more features that resemble the Carolina bays that we see all across the landscape, to temporarily pond water with vegetation in the water. The vegetation can help evaporate the water, but can also help capture nutrients, can also help to get rid of a lot of the carbon-based material like leaf litter and and other natural materials. And these have a sort of a natural internal resilience. So that led us to sort of the main goals of this nature-based infrastructure type approach, which is to mimic natural hydrology. We want to store water and we want to let it evaporate in the same way that the natural wetlands already do. And so rather than just piping the water to one discharge point and letting it spray out of a pipe, sort of like a fire hose, we want to let the water slow down, spread out and soak into the ground over a larger larger area. And then that lets us use shallow ponding to create a functional landscape with vegetation as treatment. So again, instead of building a pond and building a fence around it, we want to create these co-benefits where, you know, what if we could create a a wetland system that could actually add amenity value and add a place for the community to gather, add recreational benefits, add natural beauty to the community and turn it into a real opportunity? Here are some examples of things we and other people have done. This is a a neighborhood on James Island here near Charleston. It's a very simple bio retention basin with vegetation that stores water. Over time, it grows and becomes a natural amenity to provide wildlife habitat. Some other communities have done, this is another one on James Island that we designed many years ago, that has constructed wetlands as a community of amenity. And then in the wintertime, it turns into sort of a dramatic reflective landscape. We've worked with communities to do roadside bioswales to hold stormwater instead of putting it in pipes, but to create functional landscape elements. Also building swales between existing homes that, you know, attract pollinators, store water, but it's not an unsightly drainage ditch. It's actually more of a a landscape feature. They're also dry basins with cypress trees that kind of mimic the natural landscape. There's lots of examples all over Coastal South Carolina of folks that have built features like this. Here's a a bio retention basin within a commercial office park on John's Island. You you may be familiar with some rainwater store, rainwater harvesting and rainwater storage projects like these big systems that are in a commercial office park here near Charleston that we designed. And also, the Waukamaw Basin happens to be the home of the only coastal stream mitigation bank in South Carolina. And stream mitigation is a way that when applicants impact streams in other parts of the coastal zone, they can go to this mitigation bank, the Carter Stilly Mitigation Bank, and purchase stream credits as part of their Army Corps of Engineers permit. Well, there's several miles of stream restoration in the Waukamaw floodplain in Longs, South Carolina. And we were involved in the restoration of this stream channel. So there are examples of restoring natural streams, such as what existed in the Crabtree Swamp prior to the canal having been such as what existed in the Crabtree Swamp prior to the canal having been excavated. But this is also within a neighborhood. There's a church, it's very near downtown, so wouldn't it be great if we could add community amenities, uh, such as play mounds, um, such as natural play areas and play structures, things that could theoretically be flooded during very large storm events? And it would be, ideally, we could make this area feel a lot like some of the things that they're already a natural part of, of Conway, like, such as these, these small parklets that are dotted all across the city and have these great entry monuments that pay homage to the, the railway heritage. These small little entry monuments could make this park feel a lot like what you already have uh, and make it feel like a natural part of the landscape. Anything we create, any soil that we remove from the area to hold water means that we're going to have a lot of excess dirt we have to dispose of somewhere. So one of the ideas we've explored in this sort of conceptual diagram shows is what if we could take some of the soil that we excavate and create a series of natural berms that kind of blend into the landscape, but they serve to block some of the floodwaters from encroaching further into the landscape during the peak of these very large storm events? So we've explored the idea of using the existing roadway alignments or using raised walking trails. And instead of looking like levees, they, they, they serve the same purpose as a levee, but they actually serve more like a, a shallow landscape berm to keep water from encroaching places like, for example, the United Methodist Church. And then once again, the great boardwalk system you have on the river. This is a, this is a very characteristic part of Conway. We'd love to be able to capture some of those details and some of those elements, so it feels very much like home. And there's other examples we've seen of folks that have used boardwalks and lookout stations overlooking, uh, constructed wetlands to, to still kind of create an amenity value within a constructed feature. This is actually one at Duke University. Uh, and also parks mean parking and church needs overflow parking. So rather than adding asphalt, it has to be maintained and it would be additional, uh, impervious. We would like to add some grass parking areas that would, uh, be natural overflow parking zones. Uh, so now we're going to share with you the, the design concepts. And I want to point out again that the, the, these images you'll see, uh, we've worked closely with, uh, Joy and also, uh, Lucy Rummler, the graduate student, the Masters of Landscape Architecture candidate from Penn State, who really, it's her hand and her, uh, creativity and artistic ability that you'll be able to see here. I also want to point out that we went through a wide range of concepts with city staff a couple of months ago. Uh, and we, um, these are the, the main concepts that we've landed on. We've explored a wide range of different ideas, but we really think that what we'll show you today is sort of the best standing champion of all those various ideas. Um, so just by the numbers, kind of here's what the concept does for us. Uh, so this is another diagrammatic sketch, another cross-section where you can see, uh, just a, a sketch of, a, a scale drawing of, of the church. And then you see Freeman Avenue over there on the left. And then you see existing storm sewer pipes that are buried beneath the ground that, that funnel water down to the Crabtree Canal. What we're specifically proposing to do as part of this nature-based solution is to uh, remove those storm sewer pipes and to excavate, uh, a, a stormwater wetland complex that would be adjacent to the existing wetlands that already exist along Crabtree Canal. So instead of just a ground surface, we would make good use of the buyout zone by excavating soil and creating a new wetland system. So over time, the wetland system matures and becomes an extension of the natural wetland and provides more floodable area. During, um, different storm events, there's a temporary inundation zone that stores between 12 and 18 inches of water in an open water zone. And then during large flood events, everything can become inundated uh, and can be protected by sort of a flood control berm that blocks water from entering the remaining property and especially the church. Uh, and how does that look in the large scale? This is one of the diagrams that Lucy has, has provided for us where you can see, uh, the existing, uh, moving from left to right. You can see in the existing case, the Crabtree Greenway, the canal, and then the levee, then this forested wetland system that's kind of disconnected from the canal. And then the forested area over to the right, up into the neighborhood. Whereas in the proposed condition, one of the other features would be to gradually start to remove that levee. Again, that's not an intentional levee, but that's a levee that's been the result of the Army Corps dredging the canal over time and just dumping the material beside the canal. So what we'd like to do is provide a way for the water from the canal to spread out into that entire wetland system, both the existing wetland system and the proposed wetland system. So the floodwater has a lot more area to spread out into sort of this natural wetland complex. So the first concept we'd like to show, and we're going to spend a little bit of time on this slide, is concept one here where, um, uh, you can see a sort of an oval-shaped stormwater wetland uh, that hints at a Carolina bay, which is such a typical part of the, the, the landscape. Uh, this is about almost eight acres of total area. It'd be situated directly within the buyout zone. It would be directly adjacent to the existing wetlands. And this, um, stormwater wetland feature, features are, includes a boardwalk system that kind of winds through the stormwater wetland. And the wetland would include areas of open water. It would also include marshy areas that have low to mid-height vegetation and possibly areas that are planted with large trees, sort of like a cypress gum or cypress tupelo swamp. Uh, you can see on this, on this, uh, concept, uh, that parts of Sherwood Drive have been pierced or removed so that water can flow across, because in, during large storms, Sherwood Drive can operate at function like a dam. And then along the remaining stub of Sherwood, uh, some, we've added some grass parking, roughly 54 parking spaces that would just have a one-way-in gravel road with some grass parking so that it'd be a place for the community, for folks that don't walk to the park, they could drive there and then follow this natural path. Perhaps in the future, uh, there's a place for a restroom facility, um, a picnic and playground area, possibly a natural amphitheater that leads into this constructed wetland area. All in all, the storage volume of this basin is roughly 36,000 cubic yards, which is the same volume that we've estimated to be the, the, the two-year storm event runoff. Uh, so that might not sound like a lot, but one of the points I want to make is that when we engineer and design stormwater management features, we don't need to store the entire runoff volume. The one good thing about, about the coronavirus has been it's given us a new language, which is flatten the curve. Stormwater management and stormwater storage is, works in just the same way. We don't need to store all the stormwater runoff, but we do need to provide a place for it to hang out for a while to flatten that curve so that all the water doesn't arrive into the canal at exactly the same time. In the same way that we don't want sick folks to arrive in a hospital at the same time, we don't want the stormwater runoff to arrive in the canal at all the same time. So this represents a great opportunity to store about over a third of the 25-year storm event volume. So this can store a tremendous amount of water, about two feet deep over about eight, about eight acres. And I'm going to show a couple of the features of this, and then I'm going to come back to this slide and open it up for questions or conversation or points maybe I've missed that Nolan or Adam or Joy may want to, maybe want to weigh in on. Um, some of the specific elements about this, um, are some, you know, boardwalks. And the boardwalks can sort of obscure some of these berms that help control flood levels. Uh, and also natural amphitheaters that provide us a way to spoil some of the excavated soil. So we cut soil out of one place, pile it up somewhere else and create natural landforms, uh, such as these grass slopes that kind of block the wetland from the other parts of the community. Um, so let me come back to this, this first slide here to pause to see if, if any of the group has any questions or want to add anything that I may have missed.
Adam?
Yes, Mr. Tim.
The portion of Sherwood Drive, talk about what you would remove there and is it still possible? Or, or what is the plan? I'm not sure I understand.
Josh, can we talk about that connection with the natural drainage area across Sherwood or under Sherwood?
Yeah, um, we've got a few different ideas with how that would work. You know, one idea would be to remove Sherwood because there is, there are other ways to cross, uh, Crabtree Swamp. But some of the, the lightest touchways we've contemplated conceptually would be to go beneath Sherwood Drive, uh, with culverts to allow water to pass beneath or to, to actually cut breaches in Sherwood Drive. One of the things that we've, we've noticed from our analyses, but also we heard from a lot of residents who live right in the area is, is really confirmed that Sherwood Drive really is sort of a dam during these large storm events. So anything that could be done to allow water to pass more freely through and beneath Sherwood Drive would help to lower the water level in that whole area. The main, the main focus of the buyout zone is the stormwater wetland, however. And, uh, the, the Sherwood Drive work is simply a way to connect this work to the overall large-scale project that, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers is doing and possibly some other grant funds that we could tap into.
Thank you.
Uh, will you also talk about the reconnection of the canal, the Oxbow there by Crabtree Swamp?
Sure. Uh, I, I tended to point it out when we were looking at the LiDAR imagery, but one of the things that we noticed when we looked at the LiDAR imagery is that the original meandering natural channel in Crabtree Swamp still exists in a few areas. It looks to us that the Army Corps of Engineers sort of, you know, dredged the straight channel years ago, as they did in so many other wetland areas. And they left the natural channel. So one of the things that we can do to easily get a lot of bang for the buck, to provide more, um, you know, area for the water to spread out and slow down, would be to pierce the natural, or to, excuse me, pierce the levee, the sidecast berm along the canal to allow the floodwaters to, to sort of react or, uh, reconnect with and sort of reactivate the natural channels that exist over off to the side. So in other words, as the water, as the water increases in height, it would spread out to all these other different channels and give it a whole lot more area to spread out. And, and while, in so doing, also create a lot more ecological connectivity specifically for this Savannah Liliput, that mu-, that muscle. These are just the types of habitats where the muscle thrives, which we think provides a good opportunity for the Army Corps of Engineers to put more money into the project or other funding sources that are earmarked for things like muscle restoration of, of endangered species.
And Josh, that, this particular piece of, of the project is not all that expensive, it just basically is a, a, a breaching of the existing levee, is that, that's right?
Exactly, yeah, it's quite straightforward. Okay, so I'm going to click over to the second concept, which is not unlike the first, but there's just, a, a lot of the differences are aesthetic. It's slightly smaller, um, but you can see, one of the things that we've hinted at here is this raised berm. We pointed out where this berm could follow, uh, the natural path that would take you from the grass parking lot over to the constructed wetland. And this berm would follow along and basically protect the church property from flood events that might seek to get up into the church property and out again. So it'd serve as a, as sort of a levee of sorts. Uh, and we have lots of, lots of material to excavate from this basin that we have to put somewhere. The, the more that we can store onsite out of the flood area, the less it's going to cost and the more benefit you'll get from that material. Um, another, another aspect of this concept is if you imagine coming down Little Street, kind of coming into the park, because one good thing about this, this park would be, the, the stormwater management area would be that you have two entrances, one on Sherwood, one on Little. And Little would provide an opportunity for a new entry point from the neighborhood itself. So you have an entry point from the neighborhood and an entry point over from Sherwood Drive, kind of back and around and behind the church, uh, which we think would really help integrate it within the neighborhood and feel like a, a nice empowering act instead of just a buyout in a sort of a derelict field. Any questions or comments about this specific concept before we move on and start talking about cost and some of the other features?
It just seems that, um, doing away with a levee might in fact increase the speed of the movement of water. What am I, what am I not getting?
That's a great question, uh, and that is a common misconception. Uh, in fact, that was some of the Army Corps of Engineers' original thinking was that if they dig the canal straighter, that it would get rid of the water more quickly. But what we've since discovered, you know, in the intervening years is that as every part of the canal has been straightened, what it means is that the water just arrives more quickly. And it just so happens that this part of Crabtree Swamp, near its confluence with Kingston Lake and, and, uh, the Waukamaw River, this happens to be where everything ends up. This is the traffic jam of water, so to speak. So the only opportunity we really have is to provide more area for it to spread out. Because we can't get it from A to B any faster, uh, because the level of the water is controlled by things downstream. So the only way to handle the water is to provide more places for it to go. Uh, and so the volume of the water is what it is, but by excavating soil out of the area, excavating more channels for the water to, to spill out into, then, um, we're, uh, lowering the water level by giving it more area. Does that, does that answer your question?
Sure, sure, uh, makes some sense, yes. Thank you.
And in fact, the Army Corps, uh, you know, they've started applying some of these same ideas with the excavation of the canal up above. And we heard from the Army Corps of Engineers when we went to visit with them in their Charleston office about their work for the Savannah Liliput and how they're trying to, again, create more wa-, more, more places for the water to go, not just for flooding, but also for, you know, habitat restoration. Okay, so I've already kind of flipped through some of these concepts and how some of these individual elements can work. And again, these are, this is Lucy's hand you see here with these boardwalks that actually hide some of the infrastructure to, to store water, the ideas of natural amphitheaters, where this can become a gathering place at times. Um, and then using some of that fill soil to create landscape berms uh, that are all of a natural elevation and that are very familiar to the, the natural, uh, landscape of Conway. Uh, what we've done is we've put together a rough cost estimate, um, of, of these concepts. Uh, and this, this is mostly meant just to be sort of a planning exercise to show you as we start to pursue grants, uh, where the dollars are. So more than a total quantitative engineer's estimate of probable cost, I would like you to think about this more in terms of where most of the money is going, uh, uh, comparatively. Um, so, you know, property acquisition is about a third of the total cost. Construction is a little bit over half of the cost. And then permitting, design, community amenities, and some of the other aspects. Uh, put the, overall project, if you include the property acquisition, at about a million and a half dollars. The construction, however, is the piece that we've really been focused on, which is, and of the construction, you can see that the earthwork is, is much greater than half of the total work. So the cut volume is about $600,000, the fill is, is about $175,000. So the lion's share of the work is really in excavating soil, either hauling it off or reworking it in the area to provide a place for that water to go. The other aspects of the project, sort of the co-benefits, community amenities, uh, planting, other infrastructure like relocating utilities, relocating stormwater management infrastructure. Uh, those are all necessary aspects of the project. But this is just sort of our rough estimate of, of kind of, uh, how we think the different costs, uh, will be laid out for the overall project. Our next steps, uh, now we've, we've already, we're, we're kind of in the midst of this stakeholder feedback. Our, our goal today was to share with you our progress to date and the, the concepts and to hear any questions or concerns or ideas. Uh, this is, you know, sort of our, uh, presentation to you all based on the feedback we've gotten from the community and from city staff. From here, uh, over the next few weeks, we'll finalize these drawings and documents and work with your staff to prepare this permit app, or the, prepare the grant application package um, so that we can be, begin to actually put together different aspects of the project and move towards implementation. And also having these drawings, these concept drawings and the application, the, the grant application package will also help us to reengage with the Army Corps of Engineers and Ori County so that we can let them know what the City of Conway is doing so that they can begin to, to integrate this work with the large-scale Army Corps of Engineers, uh, Crabtree Canal work and with the large-scale work that the county's doing with sort of the, you know, the other regional efforts that happen outside of the city. So we very much see this as being, uh, we've designed this to be in keeping with both the Army Corps and the county so that they can see this as a, as a, uh, important part or an important element of their overall initiatives. As I hinted at before, uh, Joy spearheaded this Wildlife Conservation Fund, Climate Adaption Fund. That application went in, uh, just last week, I believe it was, uh, for, for a portion of the, the reconnection to the natural floodplain channels over on Crabtree Canal. So this work has already led to one grant application. We're hopeful that we have a very strong candidate, uh, that'll lead to one aspect of this project, um, being implemented. And the way these projects work is they tend to snowball because grant funds like to put their money behind projects that other folks have already put their money behind. And because of all the good work you've already done, because of the floodplain buyouts, because of the good base mapping and the work that's been done to date, we think this is a great candidate to receive some of these, these competitive funds because it just hits so many different important elements uh, of not just flood mitigation, not just community resilience, but also habitat, recreation, things of that nature. So that-
May I ask a question, please? Are you Mr. Robinson or Mr. Williams?
Uh, I, this is Joshua Robinson speaking.
Okay, thank you. What, my, my quick question is, um, inasmuch as, uh, the design that you've put together would, I mean, based on your, your expertise and, and my general knowledge, um, has potential for doing wonders in the immediate Sherwood area, um, what is the, what is the potential for it increasing problems in adjoining areas?
That's a great question. What does this do for potentially creating flooding problems in adjoining areas? This is, this project is very low risk in terms of its adverse impacts on adjoining areas. And the reason I say that with confidence is because to get back to your previous question about building the straightened canal and levees and things like that, some of those more conventional flood control efforts that really began in earnest, say 70 years ago, all over coastal South Carolina, those were sort of like plumbing enhancement projects. And what we've learned in the intervening years is that when you increase the rate of water flowing through one area, you just put the water downstream that much faster. And so in some cases, when flood control efforts or flood flood control measures are built, they still, you know, pursue that line of thinking. Let's, let's solve flooding here, but are we going to solve, are we going to create new flooding downstream or upstream? But in this case, we are taking out a large, excuse me, a large volume of soil from this floodplain and moving that soil elsewhere. So we're giving the water more place to go. So if anything, it will actually improve flooding, or that is to say, decrease flooding downstream and upstream because of what happens in this area. But again, I want to emphasize this point by saying the the stormwater wetland feature, this eight acre oval shaped basin is primarily designed to handle stormwater runoff from Conway itself so that it will slow the water down before it gets into the canal in such a way that won't create new flooding problems anywhere else. And I should also say the final permitting and everything, there are, you know, FEMA, the Army Corps of Engineers will make us prove, prove that it won't cause flooding through the permitting process and modeling and the reports, everything we have to do. But we can stay in good confidence now that that it's not going to cause new problems for you.
Right. Thank you so much.
Josh, one of the other things we talked about was that if this is successful here, we might be able to duplicate it in other areas where we've also acquired property or that we could future, you know, acquire property in the future to be able to replicate this upstream where it might have a bigger impact on slowing water from even getting to this point.
Absolutely. Yeah, this idea of taking properties that are along the wetlands and along the canal, converting those into stormwater management areas or little parks or recreational areas and then helping the canal itself to function more naturally. This is a great pilot project. Other communities have been experimenting with things like this, but Conway is way ahead of the curve with how to do this and and the Crabtree project that's upstream that's already been planted, already been excavated. I mean, that is a good precedent for taking this and replicating it all throughout the city's jurisdiction. Absolutely.
And Adam, I'd like to add to that as well. The Nature Conservancy is always very interested in how we can take example projects and utilize that to help educate folks in other areas. So not just around Conway, not just around Ori County, but TNC is very interested in how we might be able to use this to talk to communities in the southeast, along the Gulf, along the South Atlantic and share this, this great example with those folks. And also sharing it with partners, our federal partners like NOAA and FEMA and the Army Corps at those levels as well as our state offices, EMD and Disaster Recovery Office. So they can see the kind of work that can be done with funds to help ahead of floods or when rebuilding more resilient after flooding.
And I think I've talked to a number of council about this project. And one of the things that we are stressing is that we hope to get grant funds to be able to implement this and augment the amount of money that will come out of the city coffers. We do have the stormwater dedicated funds that come in, the stormwater fees would pay for it. We're hoping to be able to use those for any matches, for any grants that we're able to get. And I know that Joy is working on it right now. So hopefully when we get a little bit more information from that, we'll bring it back to you. But none of this will be done without grant funding to supplement the funding from the city.
And Adam, that's a great point that that reminds me of something I meant to mention, and that is that one of the things that makes grant applications very competitive is a strong match. And because the city has already invested resources in buying out flood prone property by way of the FEMA program, the city has utilities there, the city has lots of ways that it can contribute a very substantial match, which will make, continue to make this project competitive because of the way that the different grant funds leverage one another and because of the proactive nature of this project and how you all work together from very soon after the flood events. So in terms of the match, every dollar that's spent, every bit of resource that goes into this project can be leveraged into, you know, one dollar becomes two dollars in in sort of the scheme.
That almost answered the question I have between you and Adam. What, what do you foresee, when you showed the chart of what the cost is, what do you foresee as far as grant money versus what the city has to contribute?
I'll take a stab at this one. There are a lot, there are a lot of grants out there that could be used for a program like this. However, because we've used FEMA funds to do the buyout, we can't go back to the federal pool of money for for this project. So we have to focus on private grants or other grants that aren't federal grants, which are typically a higher matching percentage. But let's say ideally, we're looking at a 25% match. So if we do, that's what most federal funds are. There are some that are that are one to one matches, but ideally what we'll be looking for is a 75%, 25% match, where we put up 25% of the funds and the giver would be giving 75% of the funds. That's the ideal. That isn't always the case, but we would, you know, kind of add these to each each grant. We can also, Shane, add in-kind services for some grants. So as Joshua mentioned a moment ago, we have purchased all these properties that there are some in-kind that we may be able to use for that. If we have to move utilities, that is, is stuff that we're doing that we would be coming out of pocket as a city for without actually coming out of pocket that we might be able to to monetize and use that as our matching funds. So for some grants, we have some leverage that we may not have for others. Hope that answered your question.
That, that did, and it raised another question. We've talked about Army Corps and just said FEMA would probably just take our federal grants away. Does that include the Army Corps grants?
Josh, Joshua, Joy, I'll let you answer that one because I think that's a whole different topic.
Yeah, from my, best of my knowledge, the Army Corps is doing work really separately from this project. So they're doing what they're doing no matter what the city does. Our, our desire to to sort of borrow some of what they're doing with the Savannah Liliput and other things like that was was basically to to help get their support so that as we look at other grant funds, we can say the Army Corps, this is working with what the Army Corps of Engineers is already doing. So yeah, this Army Corps is going to keep doing what they're doing. Part of what we want to do here is to give them ideas so that if they start working right in our project area, that we'll have something ready for them that came out of our master plan that'll make it easier for them to do what what we want them to do instead of what they would want to do.
Ms. Timms, I see your hand up.
Joshua, what is the time element on this construction project? I know it's massive and it's over a period of time, but do you have any idea what the time element would be?
The construction itself would be, you know, something that would require, require on the order of months. Permitting would be on the order of months. Construction would be on the order of months. The big unknown is the, the grant application and the grant acquisition cycle, which could be on the order of months to a couple of years, I would say.
I can't think of any project that we've had in the City of Conway in many a year that offers such promise to our citizens and to us in the future. If this were to fulfill its dream, I think it would be fantastic. And you all have done a great job presenting it.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work on.
And I think it's worth mentioning too, that, that, you know, big round million and a half dollar number. There are certain portions of the project that could sort of be phased. So, you know, maybe the, the whole constructed wetland effort, you know, somewhere close to a million dollars, that's pretty hard. Like that is one kind of lump item. But I think there's ways that we could kind of phase out the different aspects of the project to pursue different grants. So, you know, say the city gets a hold of a million dollars in grant funds from EMD and can build the, go ahead and build the constructed wetland portion. A lot of the like community amenities and stuff could probably pursue through other grants like, you know, transportation nonprofits that offer grants in that way. And like, like we mentioned, hopefully the Wildlife Conservation Society funds will be able to come through and do that to do the levy restoration along the canal. So, yeah, short, short way or long story short, I think we could break, the project can be broken up in different pieces to pursue different sorts of funds.
I think we have another hand from Mr. Hubbard.
Yeah. So my question was, you know, we're talking about help from the Army Corps. Are we talking about grant money from the Army Corps or them coming around doing the conservation part? Because I, I, my, I guess my question would be, what do we foresee the city coming up with as far as money goes?
Shane, it's going to depend on the individual grants that are available. I think we're looking at one right now, which is a one to one match. Is that right, Joy? Shane, yeah. So I think it's a, it's a $250,000 grant that we would have to put up $250,000 for as well. And we're looking at that one right now. So that is a one to one. That is not the ideal, but that is, that's a, that's a, it's a, it's a grant. What the Army Corps is doing is they're actually physically doing the work. It is not a grant that they'd be giving us money. They're out there, they'll be digging it, they'll be letting the contracts, they'll be the ones we, they're doing the work, we're just innocent bystanders. But what Josh is saying is that hopefully they can make their work what we want it to be as part of this plan. And that way, we're not out of pocket, we're not managing any projects, we're not doing anything. They're doing the work that we would like them to do and it's part of this plan.
Yeah, and that's a separate project, I believe, between Ori County and the Army Corps to look at all of Crabtree Swamp. This is for one small piece of it.
All right. Shane, I, there is no way to tell you how much money we would ultimately need to put this in. It all depends on the grants that are out there. But as each comes up, we'll bring it to you to take a look at and make sure that you've got, we've got support from council.
If I might
One more question and I'll stop. Did, and as far as the county goes, have they committed to any funds?
No, not that we know of. They're doing their own study and this is not, we're, we're doing our, our thing and they're doing their thing.
Thank you.
I'd like to just echo Ms. Timms' comments about the, the potential good of what such a project would bring to the city and and something that's just that we're in such dire need of. I also wanted to congratulate those of you with, with the, with the group for your, your presentation. I know I speak for me. I don't know if anybody else is a lot better than me, but when it comes to matters of natural science, they don't necessarily come real easily. You did a really fine job of showing this from a practical standpoint, how the, the pieces of this, this project work together for good.
Thank you.
And I thank you. Yes. Mr. Williams?
I think Mr. Goldfinch has his hand up.
And please do that for me because I don't, I, I still haven't been able to pick up that, that piece, Adam.
Yep, absolutely, Mayor.
Hey, guys, Mayor and Ms. Timms, I agree with you all. This is, this is great, and I think this is going to come across real well to a lot of folks who, well, really all of us that are concerned about this flooding. It's in terms of timeline, and I apologize, I had to step out for a minute, but so I may have missed this, but obviously this is a capital expenditure and would be so in our budget. Is this something that we would look at doing over a one, two, three, five year timeframe?
Yeah, I think it's not going to be implemented all at once unless there's this giant grant that comes into place, but I think we'll have to piecemeal it to be able to get it all together. What Joshua mentioned earlier, I think is is pretty telling is if we're able to get one grant and start the project, the likelihood of us being able to get a second grant to continue the project is higher because they seem that we have a commitment and that we're working toward a goal. And I think that's the beauty in this. I know we have not approved next year's budget yet, but one of the things we did put aside at the budget retreat was, was money from our stormwater fee to be able to do projects like this and start making a difference in the flash flooding that we're having. And I think, I think that's hopefully we're able to do that over a couple of year period and be able to get one or two big projects like this done.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we've also seen there's a significant pool of grant funds that are specifically targeted for projects that are basically shovel ready. So, you know, in the coming weeks, we will have basically all of the planning done. So, you know, we would be pretty competitive in these smaller pools of projects competing for funds that are ready for implementation, kind of like Adam mentioned.
Great. Mayor, I don't see anyone else with their hands up.
So I, I guess that means that we've just concluded this particular piece of our meeting. Again, I would like to give thanks to the Robinson Group for all of your diligence and expertise. It certainly is a, an exciting venture for us and something that we'll be very anxious to hear more about as we move forward. I am now without my agenda again.
I can, Mayor, if you'd like, I can help you.
Would you please?
Or as, as Josh stopped sharing the screen, announced that the next thing on the agenda is a presentation by SMHA Architects on the new city hall plans. As you remember, we presented some of this to you at the budget retreat, but we wanted to, to bring it back to you now with the, the planning here that they've been working on. We have, we, we've given them some, some, some thumbs up, but we want to get council buy-in and council comments directly to the architects and there can be a discussion without staff being in between. And I think Billy Connell is on and he is ready to roll. Is that right?
Yes. Can everybody hear me?
Hello, Billy.
Hello.
Okay, is, is this screen being shared okay?
It is. Yes. Thank you, Billy.
Okay, great. All right. Well, I'll get started, started. Thank you all for your time tonight. We're looking forward to updating you on our progress on the project. As Adam said, we, we want to give you an update of where we are. You've seen the two schemes that I have here today and would really like to talk to these two prevailing schemes and try to help you all get closer to a decision about where the building really wants to go on the site. What's best for the project, what's best for all the stakeholders involved? You know, to date, we have the, the scheme that we showed you, which is shown here is Scheme A back in November. And then the latest, as Adam mentioned, was back in the, the budget retreat, Scheme B on the top. And what we thought would be really helpful in, in helping you work towards those decisions is looking at each one and evaluating the pros and cons that they both have, like so many times in design. You know, each, each kind of carries its own, its own advantages and sometimes disadvantages. And so I think taking a look at that may be helpful in the conversation. So that's how we'd like to approach the conversation tonight. So looking at the, the, what I'll call the first scheme, the November scheme. Obviously, when you look at the, the advantages of this or the strengths of the scheme, it obviously had a very strong presence on Main Street, which we knew was important to the city. It maintained the connection of the alley walk, the garden walk through the site and the connection down to the riverfront. Also, we looked at this site and, and, you know, really tried to approach it and design it comprehensively, making highest and best use of the overall site. Setting up the ability for future development on, on Laurel. Potential that down the road, there could be retail and even further down the road, potentially a parking garage with retail built into it, but really just trying to truly master plan it for flexibility. And then also another strength of the scheme was the maintaining Scarborough, Scarborough Alley while we, we modified it slightly, it still connects between Main Street and Laurel Street. And so by doing that, we have minimal impact on the utility corridor, which, which we know to be where the majority of sewer and power and other utilities are running, running down through the site. And then also there is expansion and flexibility provided in this scheme depending on how this park could ultimately flush out. I think that there's a little bit of elbow room that this scheme offers for the potential to, to expand into the future. Now, obviously, I think Now, obviously, I think everyone's aware that the big sort of hang-up on this scheme was the, the complication of where does the Chamber of Commerce building go? Uh, and so, you know, when we presented this, we understood that that was something that became, uh, a conversation between the city and the chamber. And so we were asked to look at, um, other options. The other, uh, sort of negative about this scheme at the time was, uh, looking at it as a slightly reduced parking. Um, we've since have revised this to show that if you did go ahead and build the entire parking lot and not do the, sort of what we previously showed as grass paved parking, um, or temporary parking overflow, that you, you could get pretty close to the, the parking count that you currently have on the site, which is about 110. This would get you to just over 90 spaces. And then with the on-street parking that we're showing along Second Avenue and then in front of Main Street, um, that you could get close to that 110 that you currently have. So, um, not really as much of a parking loss as, you know, initially was, uh, was thought to be. Um, so moving to the next scheme that, uh, you all saw at your budget retreat, um, we were asked to, to, to look at two goals in, in, in developing the scheme. One was look at a way to maintain the existing Chamber of Commerce building. And then the second was to maximize the parking. And this scheme certainly does both of those things. It, it basically compacts the building footprint a bit by going up to a, a mixture of a three-story mass and a two-story mass. Um, but obviously the, 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 the main, um, change or, or way of achieving that is that we're locating the building over a portion of the existing Scarborough Alley, thereby closing off Scarborough from Main Street. Um, just looking at the, the positives of this scheme, I already mentioned maintaining the Chamber of Commerce and maximizing parking. Uh, it, this one also does well in having that Main Street presence. Um, and it also does a good job of, of making the connection of the garden walk through the site and connecting it, again, looking at this park feature that makes that connection down to the riverfront. Um, the, the negatives of this scheme really focus on the, the, the impact of building the building over Scarborough Alley. The, the key thing that this does is that it sort of opens up a, an added layer of complexity. Uh, it's not something that's not, that's not insurmountable. It just, um, you know, it brings into play the corridor, the utility corridor, um, that runs down that alley. Um, it's going to require some entitlement process of working with the utilities to, to, um, to relocate and, and, and build on that piece of the site. Um, and then just opens up some phasing challenges of just how to keep that alley functional while you're building. Um, also, closing the alley off opens it up some potential impact on Main Street traffic patterns. And then you can see that this site or this scheme, it's, it's a little bit landlocked, not a whole lot of room for expanding, just because again, we are trying to maximize the parking. Uh, so as far as future expansion and flexibility, it's not quite as strong as the, the previous scheme. Um, so that's an overview of, of where we stand in terms of the two schemes that you've seen to date. Um, they each, you know, have, um, their pros and cons, obviously. Um, we want to, to make sure that we're doing our job as your architect to, to find solutions and, and to lead you and advise you and, and coming up with the decisions of what's best for this project and, and everybody involved. Um, and so we thought we'd offer, you know, just looking if, if neither of those schemes as presented is, is a viable solution at this point, we need to be looking for other potential ideas or, um, or modifications to those schemes that, that, um, is going to be a more, uh, viable solution. So, um, one thing to consider, we haven't shown this yet. It's not what we would call our preferred scheme, but it certainly, um, would, uh, accomplish the, the goal of, of not having to, um, relocate or interfere with the existing Chamber of Commerce building. That would be moving the new building down to Laurel Street to have more of a Laurel Street frontage. Um, and then, um, the next idea would be to, this is more of a modification of the first scheme, uh, where you, you still build the footprint in that, in that area along Main Street, but we start to look at the idea of, of, you, you know, um, be more proactive about finding a, a place for the Chamber of Commerce and looking at, um, reusing existing city buildings. So, you know, the, the Scheme A could certainly be accomplished by leaving the, uh, existing finance building in place. Um, we could also take a look at the recently acquired survey building right there on Main Street next to existing City Hall. Um, and whether that's a permanent home or a swing space for the chamber. Um, you know, it could be that it is sort of a temporary, um, relocation until they can ultimately move into the, uh, existing City Hall once, um, once you all are moved out into the new building. So, I, I bring that up because we, we want to, um, help facilitate that conversation. If it's something that we can, uh, engage with you, the city, um, staff and the chamber to, um, help the, the chamber look at space needs and see if any of those ideas are, are viable. It's certainly something we could do to help, um, help move the project along and make the decision. Um, that's sort of an overview of where we are. Um, again, um, just looking at the, the pros and cons, we're hopeful that it can foster a good dialogue, uh, where we can move towards making a decision of what is the best location of the site. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to comments and questions.
Adam, if you'll do that, please?
Sure.
You'll handle that, yes?
And Mayor, just before we, we start fielding questions or comments, I, I want to make sure it's clear to council that one of the reasons we wanted, uh, Billy and, and the team to come back and, and share this, the, the options and, and have a discussion is that rather than have them go about, back and reinvent the wheel and design another building and, and us pay for it again, is let's make sure that we're giving them some clear guidance on what your concerns are so that they have some work to, to go back to the drawing board and, and continue down, down that road. I know I've talked to several of you with, with, um, with some comments and concerns that you've got, and this is a, a good time for you to, to voice those to, to Billy and the team and, and, and maybe get some answers or at least give some guidance.
Thank you. Uh, I'll be glad to start then.
Okay, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't sure that you heard me at all. Uh, I think, uh, it, it's something that's been a, a concern of mine from the beginning, and it just has to do with, uh, riverine flooding. Uh, it, it tends to be more of a, a constant piece of concern in our community. And based on all predictions, something that will be, uh, bothered with more often than we ever have before. Uh, now, the, the question of riverine flooding would probably be the same for the, whether the building actually faced Main Street or faced Laurel Street. There's been some talk about another location, but, um, just to, to the extent that there is an answer to this question, how much has the, has your team, uh, Mr. Connell, um, actually considered, uh, the risk of flooding? And what about the design of the building would, um, be protective in that regard?
Well, uh, we know that the, the, the site as it stands now is, is not located in, um, a hazardous flood zone. And, um, and the other thing that we obviously will, will be sure to do as we, as we, uh, move forward through design um, is to, is to utilize and explore the, the viability of some of the features you're seeing in these schemes. Um, and it really kind of ties in nicely to the presentation that was just given. Um, you know, the use of bio swales and, uh, best practice methods of, um, of stormwater management. Um, you know, it's something that our, our, our team, uh, is familiar with and we have to deal with, um, on a regular basis here in Charleston. Um, but, um, it, you know, I think, I think the, the positive thing is that it, it is not in a flood zone. Um, anything we'll be doing to this site, because you can see it's now almost entirely impervious, anything we'll be doing, um, you know, the sort of ideas that we're proposing here, um, will be improvements. And, um, you know, I think that there's certainly ways that we can, we can mitigate and, 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 uh, address that to, to, to try to control that.
Thank you.
Mayor, um, Mr. Hyman has his hand up.
Okay, Mr. Hyman.
Uh, Mayor, at the budget retreat, this was discussed a good bit. And, and, um, uh, Billy, I don't know if, if Adam has discussed it with you or not, but, um, the, uh, B model that you've got there?
Yes.
Um, we discussed if that was flipped, um, meaning that the, I think that's to court administration. It can't really, it's kind of small, but if that was over next to the chamber and there was not an exit, um, coming out right there, if Scarborough could still be open? Does that make any sense?
So, um, this is, this is the scheme you're talking about, correct?
That's correct, yeah. If you were to flip that and court administration would be to the right of finance between it and the chamber, and it was kind of all brought together as one, uh, not one building, but, but one kind of area there, uh, if Scarborough could still be, uh, could still be open?
Um, it's certainly worth looking at. I think that it, um, you, you know, I think the question then is just looking at how to rework the, um, the existing parking for the Chamber of Commerce and maybe it's using some of the city down here.
Well, it doesn't look like it would take a ton of parking. And, and one of the things that we discussed a little bit was, um, I see on this, the Sallyport, most courthouses now are going for some kind of gated entrance and that would be a little more hidden if it was there than at the end of Scarborough Alley.
Yeah, I, I think it's certainly something that we could look at. Um, uh, trying to, um, it, it's just a matter of trying to get the, you know, the, the program accommodated for and still allowing for, uh, you know, some, some breathing room between those two buildings, um, so that you're not sort of slamming them right up on each other. But I do, I, I, I see the, you know, the idea, the, the point of trying to, you know, pull it over to, to, to achieve that. Okay.
Ms. Tim's has her hand up as well.
Ms. Tim's?
Hi, Billy. Um, I really feel like that I want to touch these plans and have you see what I'm touching and you can't see this, so this is a real issue. I think we have communication gap big time here. I don't know how people do this all the time. Um, my issue is also one of, uh, the alley. I was coming over the bridge from the Myrtle Beach area the other day and I noticed that the, when we were speaking of the, the street being open in front of the chamber building and it being an exit and an entrance as well, people are going to try to use that as the cut-through if we close Scarborough Alley. And it's too close to the bridge, there's no way to really turn. There's no extra road frontage in, in the street where you can make a turn. There's a little bit of a turn lane down in front of Scarborough Alley, which makes it easier. Now, I do want to get rid of that building that we just purchased. I want it gone big time. I mean, that's just a driving force with me. I can see no advantage in keeping that, so I think we should do something with it. Um, I don't have a solution for you except to say that I too am concerned about the alley. Other than that, I probably liked A better than B. I, I think it throws our park and everything as a part of the chamber building rather than a part of the, um, City Hall. And I'm not sure I like that part, so. But, you know, sliding things around, we have a lot of property here and I don't think it all has to be lined up in nice little straight lines. So, I'll leave that up to the masterminds in your firm is to know how to do it. But I, I, I'm opposed to Scarborough Alley totally. I don't think the chamber building should be the entrance onto Main Street. Let's put it that way, somewhere, some, something else. And that just doesn't strike me as being feasible. It's too close to the bridge.
Mr. Hubbard has his hand up?
And, and Mr. Emmerich, in my, in my stead, would you just call on that person? It'll save us a, a second here and there. Mr. Hubbard?
I'm in agreement with you. Um, and I think another aspect of this plan is we closed the, the, the little shortcut under the bridge that goes to Second Avenue.
Yes.
And so you only have a right turn on Main Street. And that puts you at going to Highway 90 to turn around to come back into downtown Conway. I, I don't know, I think I've got an issue with that.
Yeah, the, just to address that, the, in, in both schemes, that was something that early on we, um, we generally had good feedback about was, was closing off that, that sort of offshoot that takes you to Second. I think a lot of people felt that, that sort of intersection down there was kind of awkward and a little bit of a, uh, a safety issue and, um, but, but you're right, uh, Shane, that it, it does, you know, wi- in conjunction with this scheme, it does create obviously a, 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 a pretty significant impact on that, that traffic pattern.
This is an unpopular opinion, but I've heard it from several staff members that closing both Scarborough Alley and the existing access to the chamber would be the safest thing for, for traffic on Main Street. Um, I know that's not the popular opinion, but I felt like I would be remiss if I didn't echo it. Um, I received comments from both our Chief of Police and our Public Works Director during the meeting, so just letting y'all know.
Thank you. And that makes sense to me, by the way. It just seems that, uh, any attempt to keep, uh, Scarborough, or Scarborough Alley open just exacerbates the, the issue of, of traffic controls on Main Street.
Uh, Ms. Tim's?
What if the entire plot was moved back to almost line up with the original City Hall? You know, we have it jutting out and I really can't tell what's what in there. There's, uh, I don't have a glasses on for one thing. But if that moved back, um, I, I don't feel like we have a very magnificent entrance, which is something I'd like to see.
You're, you're saying, a- as this scheme has shown, pull, pulling the, the entire building back to give some more?
Well, I don't think there's any reason why it couldn't come further back towards the parking lot. The whole mass.
Right.
I mean, I don't know, I, I'm just saying, if it came further back, you might could even run a drive-through in front of something and landscaping and have some end-to-end parking or something. I don't know, going over towards the chamber, they do need a way to get to their parking lot. And if you close off everything, it's going to be a mess getting people to their parking lot.
Mr. Goldfinch?
Thank you, Adam. Do we have, uh, as far as closing the, uh, the exit off of Main Street? So if you were going towards Red Hill on Main Street and, you know, you take the exit now by the, by the water building, is the state going to give us permission to, to close that?
Billy, I know we discussed that, have we, have we talked to SCDOT yet?
Um, not yet. Um, John Poston, um, is, I believe he's on the call. He might be able to, to talk a little bit about the process involved. We're, we're not, you know, this is a, uh, a very preliminary look at this scheme and obviously don't want to go too far down the road if we don't see viability in it. But, um, if John is there, he might be able to talk a little bit more about what's involved in that.
I can, Billy. Um, we, I mean, basically it's going to start with a conversation with DOT. That roadway is fully in the right-of-way of 501 business. Uh, so it's fully within their purview and their decision of whether it can stay open or should stay open or can be closed. We have not started that conversation. Um, really didn't want to do that until we had some endorsement or, or some nod from the city that was time to have that conversation. But we're prepared to do that once we settle on whether it's desire of this council or not.
Billy, we haven't given you any direction yet.
What, but there's been some good comments. If, if, if I may ask, the, I, I'd like to hear some conversation about the, you know, the merits of A and, and where, where the discussion stands with the, the chamber in terms of i- is, is this scheme just, does it still have viability or is, is, are we still staying away from a scheme that looks at a relocation of the Chamber of Commerce building?
Mr. Goldfinch.
Thank you, Adam. I think it would be, it would be worth us getting a very clear message from the chamber. I, I know a number of folks involved with the chamber have reached out to me. They've reached out to many of you. I've had different conversations. We've had meetings, but there's not been a, I haven't heard a unified message from the chamber that this is what we want to do, or this is what we don't want to do. And I really think it would be worth, you know, exploring that because, you know, that, that in, in doing that and getting some clarity there. I mean, I think I know the answer, but just getting some clarity there so that, you know, that's one element that I know a, a number of us are, are hung up on is the fact that, you know, there is an agreement in place to, for them to use that property for some extended period of time. So just some thoughts there.
And if I can interject, is that, that's what I'd mentioned earlier. If, if you feel like it's appropriate, you know, we'd be very happy to engage in that process and, you know, help look at the options with them, help them program their space, get a good sense of what exactly they do need, how much space they're currently using in that existing building. You know, to see if any of these, these ideas that, you know, were, were shown in, in that previous diagram, uh, have some, some merit and, you know, we can certainly wo- work with them, do some sort of a charrette process where we can take a look at that and, and try to, try to facilitate that, that conversation.
Ms. Timms.
Do you see benefit in, in their doing it or is there a simpler way?
Well, we've, we've not really had any, we, we've presented to them several times. We've not had any dialogue back from them at this point. So perhaps that would be a way to, to move the, the topic forward is to be able to offer Billy's and Sam's services to them. And I had a hand wave from, from Ms. Timms as well.
A minute ago, I had a different screen and I don't know what to call it, but it was the scheme when you were trying to show the chamber being implemented into it. Can you, can you tell me? That, that was it. Going back to the other one.
Oh, this, okay.
That, that was sort of what I was looking at at the entrance, uh, where you pulled back even with the other building. If you took that little building that we just purchased out of the way, that would make a really nice plaza or whatever you might call it in there to me.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think that this is, this has always been our preferred scheme and we, you know, we, we, we worked with staff and, and looked at multiple schemes before starting to make a recommendation to you. Obviously, the, you know, the, the chamber issue, I think is something we have to, we have to resolve and as I said, we'd, we'd be very happy to, to do anything we can to help, you know, facilitate that conversation.
Mr. Hyman.
Thank you, Adam. Uh, I, I'm in agreement with William that I, I think that we need to, to have some kind of communication with the chamber on this and, and I would, if this is the appropriate time, would make a motion that we allow Billy to facilitate that. I think we need to find out if they want to stay or if they'd be open to possibly going into another one of the buildings such as Finance Building or something like that. But that's just my two cents.
And it sounds like that's very timely, Mr. Hyman and Mr. Goldfinch.
Mayor, you've got a hand from Mr. White, I think is next.
Okay, Mr. White.
If that's a motion, um, am I muted? Can you hear me?
You're good.
If that's a motion, I will second it.
Thanks, sir. Um, Mr. Goldfinch's hand, I think was up. I'm seeing people again.
It's, it's good to be seen. Uh, hey, I was just gonna second that, but, but Mr. White beat me to it.
Shane said it's.
So there's a, there's a properly seconded motion that our architects, uh, take up the conversation with the chamber relative to ultimately what their needs and desires are so that those answers can be factored into our developing a scheme for city hall. Mr. Goldfinch.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was gonna ask this question and, and obviously all for that. But if they, in, in our discussions, if they come back and they say, we're absolutely dead set. We want to stay exactly where we are. We've got an agreement with the city. You know, is there any point in bringing in the architects at that point? Or do we talk to them and say, hey, would you, would you entertain a conversation with Mr. Connell and his team as it relates to whatever?
So that sounds to me like a substitute motion that perhaps, um, is that what you're offering, Mr. Goldfinch?
Mayor, I, I, I guess if, if they're just, if their dad's set on staying where they are in the building that they're in, then there's not really much point for the architect to have a conversation with them. Now, if they're open to, to something in addition to that, then, then, then I think the motion should stand. I, I just.
Yes, sir. And, and I understand. I, I'm just suggesting that, uh, I mean, I'm agree, I don't disagree at all. What I'm saying, I believe is that it sounds like there may be one single ultimate question that we can pose before we go so far as to get our architects involved in working with them. Am I, am I hearing you right? Okay, very good. Very good. So, um, are you offering that as a substitute motion? So who made the first motion? I'm.
Mr. Hyman, would you, would you be willing to, would you be on board with that?
I would. I would amend my motion to just to simply say that if they're not, um, uh, in any way interested in moving that we stop the talk right there as far as with our architect. Does that help?
And Mr. Mr. Hyman, may I, may I just rephrase that to say that first, uh, cities, I'm sorry? Just see, hear me out, please. Would you consider your motion reading this way? That first city staff contact the leadership of the Chamber of Commerce to ask ultimately if their decision is steadfast in their desire to stay exactly where they are. And if the answer to that is in the negative, then we would authorize, um, our staff to have the architects then take up the issue of then where else, you know, those other questions.
Very well said, Mayor. I, I would amend my, my motion to, uh, to speak to what you just said.
Thank you so much. Uh, and there was a second, Mr. Goldfinch, I believe.
Mr. White actually seconded it.
Question, um, could not, um, staff and some of the council members meet with you?
Well, I mean, any, any combination of people could actually have that meeting. I'm just suggesting that the city could take care of that first question. And then, uh, we would only involve the architects if their answer, um, leaves some room to, uh, to look at other options.
Second motion.
Thank you so much. All right. So is there any further discussion? All in favor of doing all those things we just said, ultimately, ultimately first, the city determining whether or not the council, the, the, the chamber is open to other options. And if in fact they are, then to employing the use of our architects to speak to them about those options. If you would please, uh, give a thumbs up. And I see one. I see one for Ms. Timms, Mr.
And Shane also.
Mr. Goldfinch.
Please ask Shane out there as well. Yes.
And for whatever reason, I'm not getting him, but it, maybe he's farther down the line. Mr.
His computer went down. I'm showing everything from my phone.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Shane's computer went down. He's looking at everything through my phone.
Okay, so is he?
You're making it work, man.
Are you able to see, are, are, are you able to see what his vote is?
He just told me to say yes.
Thank you so much. I mean, however, we can do this. Uh, I think. All right. So Mr. Jordan, you're the only person I don't know that I've heard from.
He also gave a thumbs up.
I see it. Absolutely. So, um, I'm going to have to, to move along and try to find a power source. Because I came here with. Done. I'm sorry. The motion, first of all, the most, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I think I have my marching orders moving forward. Is there any other questions for Mr. Connell, Mr. Poston, Mr. Heron, or Mr. Seaman?
We need to mute them.
I'm almost back, Larry. I can, I can turn you loose.
What's going on? I believe the, the mayor's battery is dying.
She's back. I got her plug in. Adam.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to comment. I saw something on Facebook yesterday about a Zoom meeting and how hilarious it was. I don't know if any of the rest of you saw it or not, but I think we might have topped the scale.
We're getting there. Thanks for being part of it, Billy.
Oh, I'm happy to be. You, uh, Ms. Timms, you clearly haven't seen my family's happy hour on Zoom, so. It's pretty bad.
Really don't get this crowd any ideas.
My son has had an episode with squirrels in the attic in the midst of all this. So that's quite a eventful video as well.
Oops.
We're sharing, so.
Yeah. Six feet now.
Were you able to hear that at all?
I can hear you now.
Hear me now. We've just settled the issue.
Are you social distancing, Mayor?
Sort of.
That's why I'm wearing my mask.
Listen, I have to manage this for you.
Okay, all right. So my, my point is that that issue is settled.
Okay.
Right. Thank you, Billy.
Yes, Adam, I will, uh, I will await your direction based on your conversation with the chamber.
All right. I will, as soon as I get an answer for you, I'll be back in touch with you.
Okay. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. And next on the agenda, Adam, please. Thank you so much. Is there anything else relative to the presentation by the architects that, uh, we should entertain at this time?
I believe that concludes that presentation, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we'll move forward with a, with public.
You got started. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, now, um, we're going to open up public input that would have been received, um, by our staff uh, in preparation for this evening's meeting. Madam Clerk, has there been any public input made?
No, ma'am. None by email, none by voicemail.
Thank you so very much. Uh, item seven is first reading of ordinance, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. Item seven is first reading of ordinance, ZA 2020 054A and ordinance to annex approximately two acres of property at 4092 Long Avenue Extension, TMS 111 0002022 and request to rezone from Ori County Commercial Forest Agriculture to City of Conway Low to Medium Density Residential District R1. Ms. Hyman.
Mayor, I believe this is an item that you removed from the.
That is the one that has been removed. As a matter of fact, I thought I said eight earlier. Actually, that is item seven. That has been, um, delayed until, uh, an upcoming meeting. Item eight is consideration of a CDBG substantial amendment by resolution, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, for council's consideration, an amendment of our CDBG plan to allow for economic development purposes. It allows us to, uh, again, work on a, uh, an economic development plan related to the coronavirus for small businesses in Conway. We've had initial discussions with the county who manages the CDBG grant for us and, uh, their consultants on what a plan will eventually look like, but this is basically tonight, you're considering opening the door for that, whatever plan comes of that will be brought back to you for your consideration at a future meeting.
Would you repeat your last sentence, please, Mr. Rogers?
Yes, I said, uh, right now, you're just considering, uh, the amendment to allow development of such a program or, and eventual implementation, but whatever becomes of that program, the final program will be brought back to you for your future consideration.
So, uh, does that mean that there's no action that's required immediately?
We would need consideration on amending the, uh, purpose of the CDBG funds for economic development. And Mayor, you've got a hands up from Mr. Hyman and from Mr. Goldfinch.
All right, uh, which was first, please?
Mr. Hyman was first.
Mr. Hyman.
Given what Mr. Rogers just said, I would, uh, make a motion that we give consideration to the implementation of this amendment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goldfinch.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to second Mr. Hyman's, uh, motion, please.
We have a properly seconded motion to give consideration, uh, as presented. We have a properly seconded motion to give consideration as presented by Mr. Rogers. Is there any discussion? Ms. Tims?
I'd like for us to make sure as we are beginning on our implementations that we do not eliminate the possibility of any federal money coming our way by getting in front of that issue. Sometimes you can't double dip and I would like to make certain we don't eliminate that as their first possibility.
Certainly, Ms. Tims, that's one of the considerations that we're working on with the county and their consultants are helping us with that as well.
I would also like to ask staff as we determine more information on these possibilities that, to the extent that information is available, I recognize that some might not be, but please do as much as you can to present to council all options that may be available, all, all those things that would help us to make just the best decision. For example, what other programs offer related kinds of assistance, under what conditions, and what, what else just generally is available.
Absolutely.
There anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. White.
Um, I'm making sure I bet the right one because I lost my piece of paper as well. But this is about the grants there, the de-federalization of Whittmore and all that good stuff. Am I correct?
It's, yeah, the community development block grant is the pool of money that we're looking at, at using for this funding. And, and the hope is to be able to use it for an economic development purpose to be able to help businesses who are suffering right now because of the.
I made the right one then. Well, in that, um, document, it says something about taking the money back from Whittmore Project, correct?
And that was something we've already worked on, was de-federalizing the Whittmore Project due to all the stumbling blocks we had with approvals.
And also talked about the Magnolia Maple Drainage Issue.
A previous project that we did with CDBG funds, yes.
Yes. Now, is that gonna take away, is that means that it's not gonna be completed? The maple drainage plant?
That, that project's been completed for about a year now.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't just taking money from it because they fussed about that forever.
This pool of money is unencumbered right now. We don't have any projects that are spoken for with this month.
Thank you. Now, will we go back to Whittmore at some later date in time?
Yeah, absolutely, but not with federal funds.
Very good. I'm good now. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Thank you. There is a properly seconded motion. All in favor, would you indicate with a thumbs up? And my thumb is up.
I see Mr. Goldfinch, Mr. Hyman, Mr. Jordan, Mr. White, Ms. Tims and Mayor.
Right. And have we still lost Mr. Hubbard?
We have. I think Larry might be in touch with him, but his, he's muted.
Okay. Is, Mr. White, do you know if Mr. Hubbard wants to?
I started over. I didn't, I didn't have it down.
Okay. Mr. White, do you know if Mr. Hubbard wants to vote? Or is there a way that you might be able to aid him in voting?
He will vote yes.
Thank you so much. So the motion is approved unanimously.
This is, this is real good, yeah.
I know. We'll do better next time. Well, now we're at the point that we will, we will hear the city administrators report.
All right. So the first thing on my administrative report is to remind council for next meeting to have your batteries charged or have your plugins. Thank you, Larry. I have a pretty short update for you tonight. When we met, while we met tonight, the governor had a press conference and announced that he's allowing the beaches to reopen starting tomorrow, but he's giving the ability for each municipality or jurisdiction to limit that opening. Also, while we met, I believe the City of Myrtle Beach is not opening their beaches. Again, I'm, I'm trying to get this information while we've been meeting, but that's what I can understand. He's also allowed some of the retail establishments that were closed to reopen, but to limit the amount of individuals inside each store to five per thousand square feet or a 20% reduction in the occupancy by fire code, which is what he was doing before with those essential businesses that have been left, well, left open. Later this week, we may hear about schools for the remaining year, but I, I don't have any clear guidance on that. That's just what I put a little piece together. Second on my list is the Low Country Food Bank is planning to do a direct to client drive-through mobile distribution next Friday, the 24th, at Wyndham Park Middle School. They're hoping to feed at least 500 families. There are more scheduled around the county in the coming weeks, and we are going to assist with traffic control during this distribution. Just giving you a heads up. We have gotten back to work. A lot, a large number of our staff members who were out on quarantine and were awaiting test results. Fortunately, all those results were negative. So we're not fully staff back yet, but we are, we're gaining some of those people back that were either sick or were quarantined, which is good news. I think you've all seen our gateway sign at Collins Park. One of the things we struggle with for gateway signage is where we can put them. We do not own as a city much property, especially on the outskirts of the city where gateway signs make the most sense. And so we're working on other, other locations where we might be able to put one that is appropriate. The one we're working on right now is at the intersection of Highway 90 and 501 Business. There's a, when they reworked that intersection, they created a large green space off to the side of the road there, which is all in SC DOT right-of-way. So we've applied for an encroachment permit to put another sign like the one at Collins Park there. And I'll keep you posted as we work through this process. To remind you, we had budgeted in our hospitality funds $100,000 for gateway signage, and we estimate that the one at Collins Park cost us about $2,500. So by doing it in-house, we've saved considerable amount of money, and we can afford to do another one at that intersection without there being any, any row ordeal. We've spoken to Santee Cooper. We can get power to the site. So really, it just comes down to if we can get DOT to let us put it at that intersection. We did close on one additional FIBA property last week. I don't have an updated number for you today, but I'll have it for you for the next meeting. I think we're in the neighborhood of 35 properties so far, and we only have a handful of properties left out there that are, that are in some status of pending, whether we're waiting on paperwork from the current homeowner, from their mortgage company or the like. There are not many left out there that are ripe for buyout. And finally, for those of you who have not been downtown in a while, the Peanut Warehouse has a refreshed look. Taylor just put it up on the screen there. The old boards were rotting off. It was impossible to climatize the building, and there was really no other way to keep the weather off out of that building. The, the windows, the panes were falling out and the boards were literally sloughing off. So it's, it's been resided. Don't worry that the wood looks new, but it won't stay that way for long. It will weather and look just like it looked before within a year or so. And it will hopefully be able to stand there for another few generations with the work that's being done on it right now. And that concludes my report, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Emmerich. Are there any questions?
I see no hands.
Thank you so much. We'll move forward. We'll move forward into council input and I will hear, we will hear from council members based on seniority. Ms. Tims?
Well, certainly I'm beginning to adjust to this new method just about the time. I hope we get to breakout soon. I think it's very difficult for us to get and pass on information and the, the way that we're operating now, everybody's in a different location. Everybody's out and about and not always on the same page at the same time. So if there are issues that citizens have that we need to be adjusting, I'll try to reach whoever I need to, give me a call. But I do think this is awkward and I hope we can soon get back to business as usual.
Thank you, Ms. Tims. Mr. White? Mr. White?
I'm glad we don't have a beach. That's all.
Mr. Goldfinch?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yeah, every time I get frustrated about this quarantine, I, you got to remember the story about Anne Frank and, you know, who hid in her house for two years and 35 days and, you know, with, with no interaction of any sort. And it just sort of helps to put things in perspective a little bit. And, but I am excited to get out and I just would remind people that social distancing does not have to mean social isolation. So I mean, we can go about our lives to some extent, but just be responsible, be safe about it and, and, and keep others in mind when you do it. And I think that's all I got. You know, pray for my wife and all of these other parents that are home all day with kids. We're, I think, week six now. And it takes a toll. It really does take a toll. And anyway, so let's hang in there. We're, it looks like the light at the end of the tunnel is getting bigger and brighter. And I love you all and I miss you. And Jean, your hair does look nice. Did you, did you guys, the beauty, you know, the beauty parlors are closed?
Yes, trust me, I do know that. It's a lot of work. I'll be happy to have them back and pay for it.
All right. Mayor, that's all I got.
Well said. Thank you so much. Our next two members are equally yoked. I'll just call on them by alphabetical and alphabetical order. Mr. Hyman.
Mayor, Mr. Hyman got kicked out, as has.
I'm back. But Mayor, I would defer my time to you, for you to speak.
Thank you so much. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just kind of echo what everyone else has had to say here with, you know, the, the, where we're at as a society now, what, what our new normal is. I don't know that we'll ever know what, what normal is anymore. But as Mr. Goldfinch said, you know, the, the adjustment of being home with, yeah, homeschooling, working from home, wife working from home. So it's, yeah, it's, it's been a big adjustment. We're all getting through it. Fortunately, we're, we're all healthy and, and that's the important part. So just want to make sure that, you know, everybody continues to, to do their part and their social distance and, you know, obviously being involved in healthcare, see things on a, on a little different angle. And, yeah, it's, it's a scary time that we're in, but, you know, if we, if we're smart about it, you know, the, the light is at the end of the tunnel and we're, we're gonna get through this stronger than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Tims has, has more to add?
I just wanted to say you people have never been so appreciative of teachers as I used to be one. And if they ever got any publicity and good publicity, this is the day of it and the time of it because I know, and the kids are equally ready for their other teachers to be back, that's for sure.
All right. And I'll, I'll close with, with these words. I echo everything that's been said. It's a, it's a tough time. It's a new situation. We will always second guess what other people's decisions are. We'll probably second guess our own decisions. But as long as we're practical and what we do makes sense, I think we'll survive this. I want to add that as other levels of government, as the City of Conway limits their restrictions, we have a responsibility to take care of ourselves. We can always do more than the law says we must do. So social distancing, I can't say enough about. I think it's the thing that's going to keep us well. That is all I have. I wish you well. I think Kevin Fever is one thing to speak about. Thank you for mentioning Anne Frank. I've forgotten all about her, Mr. Goldfinch. But whole families in tight quarters can be troubling. Just be as patient as you can. Take care of each other. Look forward to our next meeting, and it may be under different circumstances. If they are not, we will be better prepared to make this smooth and, and less comical. We take our work very seriously. We wish everyone Godspeed. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Jordan?
I'm making motion. We adjourn.
Mr. Goldfinch?
I'd like to second Mr. Jordan's motion, please.
A properly seconded motion to adjourn this meeting. All in favor with a thumbs up, please.
Mayor, I see thumbs up from everyone present.
Thank you so much. Meeting is adjourned. Take care.
Thank you all very much.
So we've got a real old architect here. When I got here, I had seventy some percent power.
Barbara. Jean.
Yes.
We could hear your conversation. I hope y'all don't say anything bad. Bye.